President.
Trustee Payton.
Here.
Trustee Brown. And Mayor Tubbins.
President. We have a general public comments, please. There, okay, thank you. This time the action items, first reading. And ordinance providing for the annual budget for the fiscal year, meaning May 1st, 2019, and ending year April 30th, 2020, for the Village University Park in Will County, Illinois. Is there motion? I'm sorry. Is there motion? I'm sorry. Moved by trustee Brooks, second by trustee McMuller. Questions for servants, comments?
I have a question. We're, thought we were supposed to have the finance. Excuse me. It was supposed to be a joint, right? It was supposed to be a joint meeting where, it's supposed to be a joint meeting. They sent out an email saying there was going to be a joint meeting. The general sent out a special, but the finance committee was aware. We do have a member of finance committee that is here that attended, so the finance committee was aware that there was a meeting today on this day that was announced at the last finance committee meeting.
Not the entire committee.
The entire committee, when we here, we actually set it, we set a date in the last finance committee meeting, and I think trustee Payton can attest to that. You have a member of the finance committee sitting in the audience. The title of the meeting just was, didn't say joint, meeting of the board and finance committee, but the finance committee was notified of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be a joint meeting. That's the way I wrote it up in a minute.
Okay. I know, well, my husband's being late, he's on his way home, he's on his way from work. That's the only other person I know that was wanting to attend. Okay. I know they had some concerns. They do have some concerns.
It is, it is.
I know, exactly. So, do you, Mr. Travis, want to just join or have any questions or comments?
Hey, I have a couple of questions. See if you can get to the mic.
Come to the mic, please.
This is Robert Travis.
Have to turn it on.
Huh?
Turn it on.
Just give it a minute, but come on.
This is Robert Travis for next reading. I got a couple of questions. What I'm looking for is to see if we can have a budget for the cable commission. We need to buy new equipment under nineteen, 2019, 2020. When the tiffs fall off, okay, then we may have a little bit more money to put money toward cable equipment. And also, I'd like to get some money for the Human Services Special Events Committee. So we can get some events at, at University Park. I go to a lot of other communities and have their events every week, and we don't have any. So I think we need to step it up in that area. This is probably for 2020, okay? I also was talking to a carnival this morning. I wanted to do a carnival here and there in April, in August, but they all filled up. So this one person called me up and they mentioned about a, because I talked to him before, they mentioned about a carnival, carnival in August, sometime in August. So they're going to get back to me, and I got to give them some information. So that's what I'm going to talk about as far as the budget is concerned.
Since I know that we normally do, did you use the card that I gave you with the carnival? Hope that's the same one? I gave you a card about a carnival as well, and they did say August. But exactly what did you want to see in the budget? Because the carnival before, hopefully that's the one that you used, that was a free?
Yeah, the carnival, excuse me. The carnival is a share revenue.
Right. So all they did was they came out, provided, and whatever they got, they gave us actually last time for some money. So I won't say the amount. So that's your concern as far as that being in the budget?
It's not about the carnival.
No, I mean the Human Services Special Events Committee.
And the cable commission.
Okay, what do you look for for the cable commission?
Equipment real, real bad, and all the good, so you don't broadcast it started.
Right.
Okay, that's my concern too.
So just to address your concerns, there is money in the cable budget for equipment. There is money in the budget slated for equipment for the cable studio to try to transition into digital. I know Ms. Jenkins is currently getting three quotes for equipment, and that's in progress this week. As far as the Human Services Special Events Committee, if that could be submitted in writing with a recommendation from either the chair or trustee liaison of the committee, I would consider placing that dollar amount in the budget. In regards to the cable commission, same recommendation, a dollar amount in a budget for the actual commission, separate budget, in writing, starting incorporating in a line item. I have no problem considering it, but it has to be written as a structured budget and placed in a line item. But to answer the question on the equipment, that is already incorporated in the numbers.
Okay, that's good. We have a meeting today, not today, but Thursday, the Cable, the Human Services Special Events Committee, we'll talk about it on Thursday.
Yeah, no worries. Like I said, this is just the first reading of the budget.
I know, it's just a first reading.
So, you know, just to make clear to everyone, because there's misinformation going out there, this is the first reading of the budget to initiate the public hearing process. So the budget is not being passed tonight, there's no contracts being approved tonight or anything like that. This is the first reading of the budget as required by law for the budget to be approved by May 1 of 2019. So there is nothing in this budget that's going to be enacted tonight upon the board initiating first reading. Upon first reading being executed by the board, the board is going to request it to put a recommendation in writing in regards to various changes they want to make. The clerk will put out the budget for the public hearing process tomorrow. So we, so we'll be in line at the public hearing process at that time. Any appropriate amendments and changes can be made by the board after the public hearing through the direct amendments to the budget. So I just want to make that very clear to everybody tonight.
All right, thank you.
Could you say that, just portion, the first portion, one more time?
First reading of the budget only, this budget will not be enacted today upon the board voting on the first reading, this sets in motion the public hearing process. So that's what we're trying to do, we're just trying to make legal standards. So if there is no trickery or there's nothing going on with the budget, we're just trying to follow and do things right by the law for one time for the sake of this village. We're trying to do things correctly and in time and in good order.
Okay, let's take it.
And also for clear understanding, not, you can have it seen, but just for understanding to the audience and the residents of University Park, there are a lot of changes that we have. Some might freeze, there's a possibility of a freeze, there's a possibility of changes, there's a possibility of modifications. That's something that the board has reviewed and looked at, and believe me, they have some ideas, what they will be sharing, and there will be amendments, changes, adjustments to this budget. And at all times, the budget is a working document. Everyone needs to understand that as well. Even when it's passed, it's a working document, can always be amended. Thank you. Any others?
At the, at the last finance. At the last finance committee meeting, I asked if we could have an explanation as to the increases, it's like a group of people are getting salary increases, and I just want an explanation.
Those explanations will be provided in writing. Department heads do have documents that you should submit, and that stuff will be, those documents will be provided in writing to the board.
Okay. Now, when that does happen, I want justification. I would like to see justification for the ordinance as well, meaning if there's a raise, we validate why, based on a evaluation and justification. So people will understand why they're getting a raise and the purpose of it, just not being a candy store like we used to be, there's justification for the raises, okay? I would like to see that attached to it. All right. Thank you. D to, any others, I'm sorry?
Treasurer Dilworth sent an email to the board with some questions, are we going to address those?
Those questions are inaccurate, and I will have a prepared written response to be provided to writing, in writing to the board. Ms. Kelly is here also today, if they want to, he was here to address those questions. Since those questions were placed in an email, then they will be formally responded to in an email. If he was here to actually speak on those questions, I would provide a response. I would say to the majority of those questions that he has, they're inaccurate.
So one of the questions he had in particular, I've asked about it on several occasions, is about year-to-date actuals.
And we've explained on multiple times that year-to-date actuals are not available due to the year-end not being closed out in the finance system due to our audits being behind. And since those audits are closed out, we're able to close out the finance system, and you're able to get accurate year-to-date. Hopefully, that will be done in the next 30 days, hopefully by the end of the month. We have started closing FY 15 and 16, that process has started today. I know Ms. Kelly has been on the phone with Fund Balance, which our finance consultant in closing those years out to attempt to get those year-to-days to populate. And that has been explained in multiple meetings, for multiple times, multiple finance committee meetings, multiple board meetings, multiple sets of minutes in regards to the reason of that, that has been explained to the treasurer as well as to the board on multiple occasions. And the response stays the same.
So since you just said that, I'm sorry, did you just say that you're going to try to have 2015 and 16 done?
So in order to post the journal entries for year-to-date.
I, I just asked the year, is that correct, 15 and 16?
Yes.
Because we have 2017 actuals, so how do we have?
And so once 2017's audit is completed, we can close out 2017's audit out.
Right, but they're not closed, but we have some actuals here on this report. So I'm wondering, they're not closed for 2017, but we have some actuals. How come we can't get some actuals and get the, from what information?
Because you're looking for 2019 actuals?
I'm looking for 2018.
So 2018 actuals cannot be provided again until the years are closed out?
How is 2017 actual done and that's not closed?
Because if you look, if 15 and 16 are open, you can get actuals for 17. 16, when 15 and 16 are closed, then we're able to populate 18. The reason you can get 17 is because three years can be open at a time, 15, 16, and 17. Those are three years. 18 and 19 are not available until 15 and 16 are closed. When 15 and 16 are closed, then you can get actuals for 17 and 18.
So how can we do a 2020 budget when we have no idea what we spent in 2018 and 2019 and have increases?
So that's not, first, that's not true that we have no idea what we spent. That, that's not a true statement that's being made.
So we have some idea, but we couldn't put it on the paper?
Because this report is generated from the system. Of course, we know what our expenditures are.
Oh, okay.
And what we spend. So based on the reporting requirements in the system, this is a system-generated report, as I've explained on multiple occasions. But I appreciate your concerns being noted once again.
Okay. Do we ever, oh, this is one thing about longevity. I know that's a union issue, and that's something that we have, but we cannot, but we can address that at some point.
Yes, during, during union negotiations.
Sorry, during union negotiations?
Yes.
And which one is coming up soon?
So police is coming up. Fire just closed out, and in order to make those changes, you're talking about making extensive changes to the contracts, you have to bargain to make those changes.
Understand. But I know that's something that's been slicker with me for many, many years. Because give somebody a longevity fee just because they're sitting in a chair a few years, I just, it should be earned. It should be earned, not just something that comes to you, that's just a waste of money, a waste of spending money.
Understand.
And it's very costly, because you've got a lot of people with longevity here.
Understand.
And we're giving them a bonus just because. It should be, it should be owned. Do we have anything here from the golf course as they're here?
Yes, I, I actually, after you're done with your questions, I was going to have the golf course come up and do a presentation to the board about the budget. If the board, does the board have any further questions?
Have any other questions, or will, will I close this out and go? Clerk G Jones?
Yeah, let the golf course come up. My question is, do we have any other questions about the budget for the members of the board before we go to the golf course?
Yes, I've just got one, Manager Payton. Just want to make sure you're saying it correctly. This is a working document, so there's a probability that changes will be made in this document.
Yes.
So that it would be at least to the most accurate.
Yes.
So if we do see something under the actual, it's not actual, but it's pretty much, you're still working on those numbers to get it accurate?
So the budgetary numbers, as the budget presentation is presented, are accurate. The issue that trustee Wilson is stating is she would like to know what was actually spent in each line item the year before. So because of the way the system is set up, and because the system has not been closed out, because we currently have open audits, it does not show that. But yes, it, it can be changed.
Okay. Let me, just one second, let me just check with someone else over here.
So on page 20, maintenance technicians, it's a decrease in 45. On page 20, for maintenance technicians, with decrease in $45,000, are we losing a person from Public Works Department?
No, what's being happened, what's happening is a maintenance technician position is being shifted, and we're adding a form to assist with the day-to-day operations of Public Works. So they're not losing a position, the position is being shifted for, to add a form to the budget. So instead of adding a salary, we're removing one position from a maintenance technician and we're moving it to a forming position. So that's why you see a reduction, and you should see increase to offset that.
So it almost offsets it?
Almost.
Yeah, then quite offset. Okay.
Yeah, because you'd have a slight salary increase because it's a forming position.
And this is just per three?
That's correct.
That's it, that's all. Okay, last thing, and we're going to turn it over to them now. Youth Development Center, that, the healthy bodies, healthy minds?
That's the, that's the Youth Development Center budget.
Right.
Attachment, Youth Development Center is a part of the budget.
Oh, where is it?
Yes, here it is.
Under what department?
Uh, did you say? Youth Development Center, where is the list?
It's under the manager's department.
You were what? No, here it is, it's in the, in the budget. It's under it.
It's under the village manager.
Okay.
And that's page 10.
Page 10 at the bottom, second from the top, you have to go in the center. Second from the bottom side, up.
Length out?
No, 168.
168.
What page is the revenue on?
168.
Say, page of revenue for Youth Development Center?
It's on page four. Last line above, total fines and fees. So the revenue is 232,740 dollars.
And that's revenue and fees?
Well, it's a combination of several things.
Right.
Details is in a handout, but includes membership fees, merchandise sales, and grants.
Now, this is also, for the public to know, this is something that trustee Philton Payton has been working on forever, for years. Trustee Payton and I went years ago to Lincoln Mall, when it was in existence, and there was some equipment that was there, and someone was selling them away. Currently, we bought all the equipment, and it's been stored here in our area for years. Our elect trustee, Mr. Williams, Donzel Williams, has always worked with it with our kids, and it's been in use, and it's been very, very, very good for our kids. So now, with the grant, or the lawsuit rather, that we won, they're going to use that to make sure that we can have the center developed. They're going to basically build it. The blueprints are out, am I correct?
Architect is coming out.
Right.
Scheduled within the week to come out and do the drawings.
Architectural drawings, yes.
Travis initially did some drawings, so they're going to go off those drawings and kind of perfect them, and then go out for bid and build construction.
Yeah, Travis did about, what, 30, 40,000 dollars was the work he used to do, this professionally, he's a professional electrical engineer, that trained him, but he did a lot of that, because he also did the cable studio back in the day. And then we had a partnership with both, with Public Works in the village and community members, so that the, all of the framing out, the plumbing, and the electrical, most of the electrical, electrical has been completed. It's about, the center's actually about two-thirds done, we just ran out of money. But due to the partnership that we developed with Clorox Corporation, they're funding the completion of the center. So what you have now is the budget, it'll actually make a little money, you know, but it's designed so that regardless of a family's income, the kids will be able to attend the center. So there's a, 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 a membership fee of like $5 a month.
Yes.
And it's, it'll be used also for senior citizens and women, because the equipment that we purchased there was designed for a certain body type, normally, kids up to about 18. It's not meant for adults like myself and muscle man next to me here. So, but the teens can use it, we're also looking at working with the architects, and hopefully we'll take the cleaners that's next to it. It has a homework, or a homework academic assistance section in there also, so that if somebody's not performing well, they can spend more time working on the academics. We had, at one point, a number of people who were lined up to be tutors to help the kids. And what we had, hoped to develop was a partnership with Governor State University, their physical therapy department, Creek Moni School District, to also collect data to develop a correlation between the benefits of physical exercise, and there's a big nutrition component also that's part of that. The center is even designed to have healthy machines there, vending machines for the kids to use. And then we will hopefully partnership with those entities and collect the data using the electronic tablets to, collect data on the academic performance and its correlation with good nutrition and exercise. So we hope to collect the data from each individual person that uses the thing. We're also using a kind of a total quality management approach with the training. The training will be done via the tablets, so we'll record how the, the equipment should be properly used, so that there won't be any degradation over the years. Everybody will always have the late, you know, the correct way that the equipment should be used. And we hope that also, we will be employing high school athletes, seniors, college students, you know, the kids that are going to college, as the principal individuals that will help work the, the center. So it'll give our kids something to do, it'll be open hopefully six days a week, it'll also include a before and after school program.
And to let you know, like I said before, we've been working on this for years. This is something that is a dream come true, we're happy that it's really come to fruition under this board, it's been working collectively with us. And this equipment, I just can't thank Mr. Tu, I'm sorry, Donzel, for all the work that he did in the temporary station that we're in, when he saw it, he was just, he just couldn't believe it. He painted the room that we currently have, he put down floors and that, and we really appreciate that, thank you so much, sir. And we know that you'll be an advocate part of this, working with our children. And I have talked to some people in Governor State University with the nutrition, I have talked to a gentleman that's offered to give us three square meals a day, healthy meals for the children. We have a technical person in the village that's, as a matter of fact, she's related to our trustee here, she has an IT class over in Park Forest, she's willing to bring it over here to do the STEM program. So we have a lot of volunteers that we've gathered and worked together, make this a wonderful organization, a wonderful place for our children to do things. They will have body measurements, and when they come in to weigh them in, and as trustee said, the machines we've got, the vending machines, we know someone is going to do that for us as well. So this is a really exciting thing, and just a blessing from God that Clorox pitched in and will really set this off the way it should be. So that's something in the future, and it's timely, because they think they're supposed to start in June, folks manager?
So the architect should be in next week to start plans, and hopefully we should restart breaking around in July.
And they're doing a, a beat out, a beat around?
Not yet.
Maybe we'll be soon as the architect's finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, yes, sir?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is, to hear the architect and rest of the disciplines on board, I'd like to become, to donate my time to become the interface between the architect and the village, review the drawings and make sure what they're putting in is what we want, okay? Because you need that in, in the engineering architectural field, an interface, to make sure they're following what we want to follow, and no surprises come up. So I'll just, I will devote my time, I just need to talk to the village manager over there, if you want me to do that.
I'm sure we'll have.
It is done. Thank you.
We have, trustee will be over that.
Travis? No problem.
Okay. Because like I said, they don't have a reception area, they don't have a study area, they don't have a training area, and we've had people, volunteers, some retired teachers have already volunteered to tutor the children, and they will be signing off. We have about, a new, I created a new volunteer application to make sure if you're dealing with the children, know that you will be, have, have to have background check, and all the credentials will have to be in place, because that, those are our children, we need to protect them.
Okay, Casper?
Thank you. All your hard work, trustee.
Can you just give a high-level overview of the budget, what you're looking for golf?
It's been provided, my understanding is it's very small, it's hard to read, so we will work with the chief.
Yes, it's fine, too small.
City manager to reformat the budget printout, so that you can see everything. High-level summary, we are budgeting revenue to be up for the golf course about $80,000 year-over-year. That's 4,000 rounds of golf, in addition to what we did in 2019 fiscal. 2018 calendar, which is predominantly fiscal for University Park, was a very, very difficult golf year in this market. We were still up at University Park year-over-year because we were ramping up from being closed, but the average golf course in this market was down between 10 and 20 percent. So just normalizing the weather, the market really kicking in, the condition of the golf course has been fantastic now for consistently 18 months. So we're budgeting a growth in rounds and revenue on the golf side. We are also budgeting efficiency, we've eliminated one manager head count, we've eliminated some of the G and A expenses associated with food and beverage, so we've eliminated about $70,000 in expense to go along with $80,000 in revenue growth, for $150,000 improvement on the golf side. Still requires a subsidy to operate the golf course of $129,000 within the budget, and we're working over time to reduce that subsidy and get the golf course simpler.
So now with, with the other parts, the partnership that you formed with, you have the restaurant part?
Yes.
Princeton?
Yeah.
That will be, that will be even better for you a little bit?
Their budget will be separate and apart from ours.
Right.
We obviously work to cooperate on sharing the space, but their budget will be provided to the board separately from ours. Our budget does not encompass any of the food and beverage expenses, any of the food and beverage revenue, none of that's in there.
Right, so we're looking forward to a very successful year, the grass is always turning green at home. So have you, have you have an idea of scheduling? I mean, before, you had a big schedule right away, because I know I've already scheduled my outing. So have you have a lot of, do you have bookings, how many bookings have you had right now for just golfing alone?
I don't have that number with me, I know Nick has been very active in booking outings. We budgeted slight growth in the outings for 2020, I always get confused with these fiscal years. I'm going to call it 19, because that's the year we're in. This season, we've budgeted growth in outings. Nick has been extremely active booking those outings, University Park is proving to be a very popular venue because... University Park is proving to be a very popular venue because we have the clubhouse space, because we're accessible right off the interstate. So he's had good success with selling outings. I would be premature to tell you I do that number right now, I do have a report I can pull up and get it. Uh, but last time I looked at it, he was projecting year over year growth.
Now, as far as any other events, that would be totally correct. Now, you'll just do golf.
Any, the food and beverage component of any golf outing, they will execute and that will be their revenue.
Okay.
And any banquets that are just food and beverage related, no golf, that will be a hundred percent their revenue.
Okay, um, well, I know six mirrors already is booked. He told me they're booking and then they're gonna have an event there as well. So I'm really happy that it's booking up. According to Nick, he's got a lot. Last year he had around about how many last year?
An outings?
Give estimates, yeah.
Did eighteen hundred rounds in outings?
Eighteen hundred last year. We expect to see even more this year.
I believe the budget's at twenty four hundred in it.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, concerns, comments? Yes, sir.
Here. Uh, also I want to address the board about, um, Boston.
No, questions for him right now, I'm asking questions to golf course.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
I just wanted.
Okay, well, wait, we'll go back to that, but right now we're talking about golf course.
Thank you. I'm scared of Paulson, Paulson.
I'm sorry, I don't have any questions, no questions.
So.
Anyone else on board, concerns, comments?
Thank you very much, Casper.
Thank you for having us.
I'll be in to check those numbers off. Okay, thank you. All right, so that's that, um. We, just for the record, okay, thank you very much, just for the record, um, door, we have already, she, she did bring up your questions, trustee Wilson?
No, no.
Address some of your questions.
Is she?
Yeah, that's one, some of them, she did.
The response was, it was given in the email, it'll be responded in the email.
Okay.
That's what he said.
The, the police action actuary report, has that been addressed? In December, the, that was the November twenty ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
Would you like to explain what you said earlier to me? Just a second. Address his questions? So again, the questions were placed in writing, you will be responded to in writing. As far, to answer your questions regarding to the actuary reports, just to be clear, because I know that that's the issue. The, by the time the village drafted its letter, those actuary reports came in late, the village attorney reached out to the both police and fire pension requesting actuary report. I have documentation showing that I request actuary reports before the levy was done. And the police and fire protection pension submitted the actuary reports late. Secondly, there was a huge deviation from the previous year's actuary report and the current year's actuary report. So we reached out to the Department of, I want to say Assurance, to verify the numbers because we have the right to verify those numbers through the state and see their actuary numbers as well. So the village did do its due diligence in requiring and requesting the actuary numbers prior to the levy being filed.
November twenty ninth, two thousand and eighteen, this report was actually sent to you, to all the village officials up there and then myself.
Okay. Do you, do you have? So you're saying it was given to me on the twenty ninth, do you have?
November twenty ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
Again, as I stated to you, I provided my answer.
And then with, the village was sued over this, you know that, right?
So the village was not sued due to the actuary reports?
They did sue because of.
Let's, let's be clear.
Attorney.
That's not accurate, sir, that's not accurate. So let's not, let's not make a statement like that.
The village was sued.
The attorney said.
It's not accurate.
Not accurate.
Please don't put that out.
Please don't do that.
The, the village was not sued over actuary reports.
Not an actuary report, not an actuary report.
Twenty eighteen.
It's not an actuary report. The village, the village was sued.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. Would you guys go aside for a minute because back and forth, you said it wasn't, was, was inaccurate.
And then also too, I don't know if you addressed this report and how inaccurate this report is, but you know, the, the, uh, the titles, two thousand and eight, two thousand and seventeen year to date, uh, actuals, okay, and the budget two thousand and seventeen, it's just so a year to date, a budget, and then a year to date, two thousand and eighteen, and a budget two thousand and eighteen. And then the budget proposal should be two thousand and nineteen instead of two thousand and twenty. Right now, it looks like that this budget is actually comparing, uh, apples to apples. And when I say that is, is that budget, you can't compare budget to budgets. You only compare actuals to the budget in order for you to actually, uh, put together, you know, a budget proposal. So this is what I actually see, okay, that is going on with this budget here. And also inaccurate numbers as well too.
Okay.
You know, so these are my findings.
We need to address that, we need to address that.
But did you address it?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, may I be right in asking?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I think we did earlier, it was just unfortunate that the treasurer walked in late. Um, manager paid, uh, so we can move on with tonight's agenda. I did ask the question, but if you don't mind, this is a working document, correct? And I don't want you to repeat yourself, but let's just do it for the record that we did tell the treasurer so we can move on tonight.
You know, one thing that I will say, and I'll be very open. Anytime there's a budget document out, anytime there's a financial document sent out to the board, when we started working on this budget with the finance committee, the treasurer was provided a copy of this document, okay? He was provided a document, the copy of this document. The treasurer was invited multiple times to come to the village hall to meet with myself and Ms. Kelly to review this document. We received a response from him on Sunday and an email to the board and the village manager was not copied on that email. So it was forwarded to me in regards to his concerns. Trustee Brooks, uh, brought the concern to me, it was addressed, I've addressed it with Ms. Kelly. Uh, and our response is, if there's an issue with a budget, if there's an issue with numbers being inaccurate, the treasurer has access to email, he has access to contact us at village hall to attempt to bring this out in a public meeting when not giving the staff the opportunity to address these issues. It's not fair to myself, it's not fair to the staff that, that works on this document. Um, I did answer the questions in regards to the numbers. I requested the board out, be allowed to respond to the treasurer in writing since he placed his concerns in writing, and we will address those. If he has questions, he can make an appointment to come to village hall and we can address those questions.
So Madam Mayor, I just want to, for the record, I did, um, I seen it just like any other trustee. I did see it and I did ask the manager, which he had, uh, referred me to, um, to Ms. Kelly, and she explained in detail and, um, indeed, they did explain it earlier, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to also, before we end and close it, Grimsen has come in to, uh, to the meeting and I'd like her to come up to the podium. And we have a question, anyone has a question for him? But we, um, Casper was here earlier and explained about the golf course on the golf side. And if you had anything you would like to add about the future or ideas or even give out just a high level overview of your budget to the board? Just a high level overview.
Okay. Unfortunately, um, my partner, Adam Short, is on his way. He has the copy of the budget, so I don't actually have a good, so I'm not able to. Oh, will this be it? Sorry about that. So unfortunately, I'm not able to give him a high level overview of the budget. I know he emailed it out, but I don't. Yeah, I, if I could take a look at it?
Yes, sir.
So from. Okay, so I don't see any major changes. We are currently operating as a restaurant now, so we're up and running. Um, we opened the doors on April first, um, to the public as a restaurant, but we've been operating since we took possession on March first as a banquet and event facility. Um, currently, the salary and benefits that we have listed of a hundred and sixty thousand, uh, administrative staff and salaries combined with temporary help at one seventy-five for the year. We are still reviewing that, that number will potentially go down. Um, in us realizing, uh, some of the events and things that were going on previously were kind of overstaffed. And we've already reduced some of the pay of some of the staff because we felt they were, um, the pay was a little high for the job duties that they have. So that number will definitely be going down. The operating revenue, restaurant, venue rental, uh, as of right now, we're still on par. You'll notice a line item of gaming, which is something that we proposed, which hopefully we will be able to bring into the golf course as, um, Glenn Woody has incorporated gaming into their facility and it's driven more business to, uh, the clubhouse and the golf course.
We used to have one there too.
Hmm?
We had a gaming function there as well.
Oh, okay, okay. So yeah, so we're hoping to bring that and we got that number based on what we've assessed that Glenn Woody is kind of doing. They're actually doing more than that, so we're, we're anticipating that that number will actually increase from a budgetary perspective. Um, I think one thing that would probably be helpful if I could answer any specific questions regarding the budget instead of kind of going through line items that anyone may have.
Well, I see that some things you're gonna bring back, which bring up revenue. I see that, well, I know where your other functions, your other facilities you have, just busting from the seams and you really do need a larger facility and we're looking forward to that.
Right.
And also, I see that, um, here, you see some decreases, as you said earlier, the prices before, previous before charged salaries, you see that that needs to be reduced and you will take note on that and make that happen. Okay, but that's all the concerns I have. Okay, anyone else?
We have already started with the renovations, I don't know if anyone has gone by the golf course. The official name has changed to the clubhouse, we've incorporated furniture, we have two sofas that we purchased and, and put there as well as cocktail tables. We have a total of five televisions that we've installed, brand new. Um, we've updated the cable and internet throughout the entire facility as well as extending outside to the patio area. We have, uh, totally, uh, cleaned and repaired all of the items in the kitchen, the coolers, the dishwasher, the.
Oh, good, they got a dishwasher.
Uh, yeah.
I walked last, it was deplorable.
The free, yeah, exactly, the freezer, the ice machine, everything that was broken because the kitchen was not open, it was not operable. We have repaired and, uh, replaced what needed to be replaced there. We have installed outdoor lights which shine on the parking lot as well as on the deck. So the deck will be something we can use in the evening moving forward. Um, we have repaired the electrical outlets around the perimeter of the building.
Can I stop you for a second there? We're not paying for that.
No, we pay for all of that, we pay for all of that. That came out of our pocket.
I mean, you have to make that clear here.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 so no, the.
TVs and all that, they'll say, oh, you know, they're coming in, putting the expenses to.
No, no, no.
No, I know that, but I just wanted to make it clear for the audience and the residents so they'll know that you're providing all the televisions, the electricals, the all the outlets, things that you've done.
Absolutely, yes, the extension for group provided all of that.
I know that, we talked about it, but for the audience's sake.
Okay, yeah, so that was one of our commitments to the village is that we wanted to make sure we're, um, contributing to the village in improving the, uh, the clubhouse itself, making it more welcoming and comfortable for not just, uh, the golfers, but also residents and, uh, students from Governor State University. So, uh, that's part of the, the main reason why we wanted to make sure we had the internet up and running at a faster speed and that it could be accessed on the patio. Because we've already, um, formed a partnership with the College of Business at Governor State University. They're gonna be having meetings at the clubhouse and they're gonna be sending students over to the clubhouse, not just to hang out, but we're also putting together an internship where the students from the management school will actually come over and do some interning with us over at the clubhouse.
Fantastic.
Uh, can you give the audience, um, uh, operations at the, at the restaurant down, daily operations, times that they will come in and?
Yeah, so currently, we're open from ten AM until eight PM, Monday through Sunday. Uh, on Fridays, we're open until two AM because there's steppers. Uh, they have an event, a standing event every Friday, so that's open until two AM. And starting next Thursday, that's the third Thursday, starting next Thursday, we will have karaoke at the, um, clubhouse and that will go until ten PM.
Very good, very good.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, could you give us who, if somebody wanted to book an event there, who should they contact? Or do you have a different phone number now or?
We do, we have a new phone number, um, the same phone number that we had, it still works, but that's Billy Casper. So the new number that we have is on our signs, which we are currently having made. Uh, they would still contact Sharon, who is still our general manager at the facility. So they will coordinate with her to book all events, um, everything, pretty much goes through Sharon.
Will we eventually get online and book them, communicate online?
Uh, yes, so they were online and then when the split occurred, uh, they deactivated, um, Sharon's access. So we're in the process of redoing that so that you'll be able to go through the clubhouse or either go through the village and have a link to get over to the clubhouse and make reservations and book. Uh, at least, uh, send an inquiry and then be contacted from there.
Will you have a separate website for the, for your portion of the golf course then, is that the plan?
We had not planned on an entire website. We have a Facebook page, Instagram page up and running and we were gonna, in talking with Billy Casper, we were gonna kind of piggyback off of the village as well as Billy Casper so that people will go through those methods, uh, to actually get to the, like I said, the contact page for the clubhouse.
Can we access the menu online though?
You will, yes, you will be able to access the menu online. We actually, uh, just finalized, because we kept making changes to what we wanted to offer. So we just finalized the menu, yes, that's gonna be available online.
One other thing, I know the churches really, really love the brunches, do you think you'll go back to Sunday brunch?
We will, we will be bringing back the Sunday brunch, yes.
Very good, they really enjoy it and look forward to that.
Well, fantastic, hopefully we can, uh, meet the standards they're looking for.
Good, good, I'm excited about it. Happy that this administration has done a lot.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
We look forward to it, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you guys so much. Okay, with that, any more concerns, comments, questions? Motion for adjournment?
Some. There's a motion in the second?
Oh, I'm sorry, first reading, yes, of the budget.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we did, we did have questions.
I did, it's not for the second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both eyes.
Trustee Wilson.
Both, no.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee McMoore.
Both sides.
Trustee Faith.
Aye.
Trustee D, I'm sorry. Him here, Kevin.
Aye.
Motion's approved, rehearse reading.
Excuse me?
All right, um, there's a motion right now to go into executive session. Litigation. Yes. Okay.
I agree, Mayor.
Right. There a motion?
Madam Mayor, if we can, uh, would like to make a motion to take. Where is the executive? Oh, here we go, here we go, I'm sorry. I wanted to see the, uh, letter correctly. Uh, post, or make a motion to take executive session, item D two, uh, postponed to after the committee of the whole, um, uh, meeting tonight.
Yes, sir. There's that, that, checking my trustee, I'm willing to. Roll call, please, trustee William. Roll call, please. Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Trustee McMoore.
Both side.
Trustee Fay.
Aye.
In here, Kevin.
Both side. Thank you. One final minute, right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
No move.
By trustee Wilson.
Second.
That's my trustee.
Oh, good, Jerry.
Yes.
We're suspended.
We're suspended. Second, you got one?
Yes, ma'am.
We're suspended. Let's go.
Yes.
This way?
Yes.
As opposed to adjourned?
Okay.
Right.
No, second. Roll call.
I'm sorry.
Both sides.
Wilson and second by trustee Brooks.
Uh, to suspend this?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Willie.
Both side.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Trustee McMoore.
Both side.
Trustee Fay.
Aye.
Both side.
Here.
Present.
Oh, I like this.
Present. Here.
Please be drawn to our pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's Weston, Weston? Do you know Weston? The man? Oh, okay, thank you. Bridget Simmons?
Frank.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bridget Simmons Franklin. First, I want to thank Public Works for starting to fill some of those potholes up. I'm very appreciative of that. I wish you was here so I could um say him publicly, but I just wanted to say thank you for that. The main reason I'm up here this evening is to talk to the board about the conditions of our playgrounds, mainly Palmer Park. And I actually have some pictures here that I would like to share with you all. These uh, the playground equipment has been in this uh very poor condition for at least four years at this point. And a lot of the equipment is broken. It's broken equipment, it's tore up, and it's very hazardous to our children. I'm talking about Palmer Park. And the reason it's such a concern to us is because that is where the University Park Lions football and cheer hold their home games. And it's getting to the point where we do not allow the kids to really play at the park because of the poor conditions of the park. We have four home games throughout the season, which starts from August through the end of October. And you could just imagine how many spectators and parents that we have out there. But we also have a large amount of children that come and play at the park. And the the park that the the pictures that you're seeing, I just took those pictures two weeks ago. But the condition of the playground equipment has been in that condition for at least four years. And the reason I'm bringing it up now is because it's very hazardous and it's very dangerous for our children to play at these parks. Um, I've I've been quiet on this for a while now, just hoping and praying that somebody would do something about it, but it really has not and it's actually gotten worse. And I know of a few children last year that actually got hurt at the park. So that's why we uh shot, we don't want our kids to actually play at the park unless we're over there watching them. And during the summer months, you know, parents just allow their kids to go to the park to go and play. So the parents don't really understand the condition of this park. A lot of people drive past the park because it's right by the middle school. So people drive past it and you look over there and you really don't know the condition of the park unless you're actually driving up on the playground. So if we could do something about this, it really, that park really at this point needs to be tore down and rebuilt. Um, you know, we are working very hard as far as trying to find grants on trying to um update and upgrade the actual football field. Uh, but the park alone does not belong to University Park Lions. Now, we have a five oh one C three where we could actually go out and look for grants, but that's where I would probably have to work with the village manager or somewhere else, uh someone else where we could actually partner together and try to get these parks built. But the parks are in very, very uh poor condition, along with Craig Park as well. We had our community, uh our our fourth annual community uh barbecue, uh me, uh across two, two and nine, uh about a uh, about a month ago, three weeks or so ago. And we went out there to actually clean the parks up, but we only did what we could do. We cleaned as much as we could, but that park is also in very poor condition. And I know that um, you know, someone don't, somebody from the industrial park had donated some money for the baseball. I'm not sure what happened with that, but the, this was two ye- it was donated two years ago because I was here at that meeting when the mon- when the money was donated. But those parks are in very bad shape and it's very dangerous for our kids to be out there. And so I just wanna know, what can we do to upgrade these parks and the condition of the parks and or are there already work or there's something in the works already for the parks to get upgraded? But it really needs to be fixed.
First, thank you for First, thank you for bringing up your concern. I'd be more than happy to partner with you. Um, last year we attempted to apply for the Kaboom grant. Uh, because the village didn't have our separate five oh one C three, we were having issues in getting that grant. I'd be more than happy to partner with you, Coach, in applying for this grant and co-sponsor with the village so we can get this, make this happen.
Thank you.
Because we have, we have done it since I've been here. I know we've applied multiple times. We were successful in the past. We haven't been successful lately. When we contacted Kaboom about a couple of weeks ago, they stated since we didn't have sponsorship through a five oh one C three additional organization, that'd be more difficult to get the grant. But if you guys wanna partner up, I have no problem in kinda putting resources out there and making that happen. Also, if you wanna work together, I have no problem drafting a letter and we can go out to the industrial park to some of our businesses and solicit funds and to assist with that. A lot of our businesses would love to do that because they do uh have philanthropy benefits within some of the businesses out there. I have no problem in doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. I appreciate you bringing this to our uh light, our 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 basis to this tragic way the park looked. I haven't seen that park since I was little, since my kids were little, because my kids were younger than your kids right now. We used to go out there all the time and it was fresh. It was brand new and stuff. And I haven't been out there since the kids were little. They grown now, but um it's been a while, but I appreciate that. I I've only experienced a new park that was out there, but now it's in disarray. So I appreciate you and your helping for uh for doing this for us.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually, I remember when I babysat, taking uh my friend's daughter to that park. And she's now twenty. And that's when the park
Yeah.
had already been standing. So it's been there at least twenty years, but it just needs some upgrades.
Right, all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you so much, but that's something that um told the village manager should have been in plans. That's what I mean about maintenance and upkeep. It should have been years. You should never let it get to that point, ever. You, just like your own home. You see something pure um deteriorating, you can replace your carpet. You don't wait fifteen, twenty years. You're there, you have directors, they should always upgrade, upgrade. Just like we just received something beautiful from the golf course and you should see the upgrades they're gonna have in our cable station. You go and, please go to the cable station, I mean to the uh golf course and look at this amazing upgrade. The kitchen was so terrible, I'm telling you, I didn't even wanna walk back there, but they weren't upgrading. You have to constantly improve. You don't want what you want, want every year. You try to do something to make it better. And except, I'm just so happy to see that this is happening. But you have to hold people responsible. If you have something, you're responsible for it, you're a leader of it, and you should make sure that it's upgraded. You, it's nobody, if you're a director of public work, you're a director of the police department, you know you need things, say it then. You have a budget. Each director has a budget. When they don't do what they're supposed to do with their budget, that hurts everyone. Because years ago, more than ten years ago, there was a kid, we had specialty events had something out there. We had our specialty events event and a child got their leg cut on the s- on the slide, slideboard. We tried to fix that. Why, why isn't that fixed? You see a problem, you jump on it right away. You don't wait until it just keeps going and going and going. It's something that's maintenance at all times. So thank you for that.
Please keep those pictures for you guys. They can always be in your place so you can out, you know, so you guys know that this needs to be uh somebody's agenda to make sure that it gets fixed for the kids, especially for the
Are they getting the grass cut?
Cut it.
Uh, Mayor, I don't wanna go because I know we have two trustees that can only comment. I just wanna make sure, is the grass getting cut? Because the last time I was there with the Mavericks and we, UP and Lions were hanging out, the grass was horrible. It was a dr- I addressed it, but back then it was trustee Larry Brown uh that um um said that he was gonna take care of it, but I have not, you know, since I left the Mavericks, I don't know what was the status of the park. I know he tried to do something again. We're talking, but two years ago.
I'll let my husband address that, but I will say that right, right, maybe of two weeks before we actually ha- uh have camp, which is the beginning of July, which this should be July second.
Yes, ma'am.
I always send out emails to the the leaders. We always send one out to the village manager, whoever's over public words and, you know, whoever else to let them know, this is the day that we start. Um, he always makes sure that we have ample security out there. We have the police officers coming, you know, coming and look over us and watch the children, but also to ask them if they could please make sure the grass is cut so that, you know, the kids can
Right, because it was horrible with mosquitoes. We just hate to say it, but we just, the agreement was, why don't y'all come to us because, you know, it was cut. But we did not want the kids to, and I think trustee, well, it was coach Brown. He didn't, Larry Brown did not like that at all. So I wanted to see what's the same going because I had left since then.
Yes, I I would agree that uh we have to do a better job of cutting the grass. It was cut, but it wasn't routinely cut. Uh, they didn't cut a portion of the uh practice field, so that's something that we'll have to, we'll have to look into. And also, as far as uh Craig Park, we know that the baseball will be having its home opener soon. So if anyone's willing to donate some paint, paintbrushes and different things, I'll go out with the kids and we'll get the park painted. And uh just there's some wood on the concession stand that needs to be replaced. If we can work together to get that wood replaced, I can make sure that I take the boys out and we'll get everything painted and get everything looking good for the home opener.
But we do have a company that I told Public Works, parent correction before years ago. We have a company back there that volunteers wood. They volunteer wood, but no one went to get it. But it is available, so let you know that.
Okay.
All I need to know is the resources. If you tell, give me a list, tell me what you need, tell me the resources you need, we will make it happen. I just need to know. I think the biggest thing the board is expressing and I'm expressing is if we know, we'll make it happen. If you tell me what you need, we'll make the resource happen. And in a timely manner. We have a new leader in the Public Works Department, you know, so we we are, it, our goal is to make sure that the parks are safe, that we get everything taken care of. But if we don't know why or what hasn't been happening in the past, we can't make it better in the future. But we will, if we can document it, we will take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Gina Williams?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, me and Dee, I did have something for her, but we did straighten it out. Um, the only other concern I have, uh yesterday we had an association meeting and Liz Williams is our president. We have a lot of potholes on um Pino and we were concerned about that and she was saying that that is the village's responsibility because we haven't had them repaved since um two thousand and five. So that was one of my concerns. Um, the other, I wanna just um touch on, the day of the election, a lot of crazy stuff happened. And I think we as a people have to do a better job. If we're ever gonna grow, we're ever gonna heal, a lot of the nonsense that takes place on that day is really getting out of hand. People out here at the library smoking, yelling with bull horns, acting crazy. It's time to grow up. People should not be antagonized and be harassed when they're going to vote. Ninety-eight percent of the people that vote out here, I think they've already made up their mind. They don't have to wait to election day to decide. So you trying to shove something in my face or you trying to tell me who to vote for, please save it. And even the people on Nextdoor, when you come on there, I think you all know me pretty well. I come to these meetings, I observe, I take notes, I pay close attention. So when you get on there with a lot of fluff and stuff, it's not gonna work for me because I'm gonna tell it and I'm gonna tell it like it is. Now, maybe I can use a softer approach and I'm praying to God to help me with that because I know that he's not done with me yet. But I'm trying hard, then you know it, trying hard to bring a better approach. But we got to do better, people, because it's getting so ugly. The division, the hatred, it just keeps surmounting. And I just wanna thank the mayor because Saturday she was on the radio, WBON. Her state of the union address was outstanding. She did our village well. She spoke about the progress. She spoke about the setback. She spoke about how she's on those different committees and how she works to get money and bring networking and things back to us. A lot of people don't know that because she's not on Nextdoor and no one's really putting it out there. But to know that we got hotels, we got stores, a new metro system coming. We have got to work together, people, to keep our community unified and not divided.
Thank you. Ms. Reese Williams?
Hello, board.
Hello.
Building public. Um, I am Sherry Williams. I'm coming uh to first of all congratulate those who won on the election. I was not one of the fortunate ones to win, so I thank everyone who voted for me and everyone who did not vote for me. Um, very, very grateful and very appreciative. Thank you. Um, and Toot Toot, congratulations. He does very good work in the community. I love that guy and his wife. Okay. All right. So moving forward, I'm still gonna start with the initiatives in which I said that I wanted to do as far as my um my campaigning was concerned. One would be the gardening club meeting. Uh, the first meeting will be Saturday. Um, at eleven thirty AM, we're gonna be at the golf course. If anyone wants to meet us there, we're gonna go ahead and meet at the golf course at eleven thirty AM on this Saturday. That is the first thing. So anyone who's willing to um donate anything like that, we'll be discussing everything that we need at the golf course, seeds and and the and the and the like. The second thing is the walking club, as I said, fitness and exercise and nutrition as well. I'm glad that the board is actually moving forward on things that they were been doing for a while. Uh, but we're gonna go ahead and start with the walking club on Saturdays. We're gonna meet at Palmer Park. Uh, we started last Saturday. Um, it was a very, very, very nice day. It was a great walk. Uh, we started out with a two mile walk. For those who can't do two miles, we'll cut it short. I do have a one mile uh and a half a mile as well. It's a very uh flat terrain, so you don't have to worry about uh bringing any stick. Well, you can bring a walking stick, but you don't have to worry about rough terrain as far as uh that walk is concerned. Um, and again, a biking club as well is gonna be started up. We're gonna be starting uh looking at the meeting for the biking club starting next week. I'm gonna create a route for that. If you do have a bike or if you need uh directions towards a bike, please uh let me know. You can reach me at three one two three eight eight two four three seven. That is my direct cell phone number. Um, please text or call. The last question is, why do we have a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars uh subsidy for the golf course? I heard the gentlemen that were up here, they said they have a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar subsidy. And who is that, who's paying the subsidy and why do we have it? And they said they had, they had just found an actual of numbers of seventy thousand dollars. And if they found an income, a general, a ju- uh generating an income of revenues of seventy thousand dollars, be it cutting a position or adding funds, where is this hundred and twenty-two coming from and how come that couldn't be cut as well? And there's no question towards that.
Keep it.
So to answer your question, that is coming off based on the revenues and expenses that come in. The village is only obligated to keep their general fund at uh a, at a amount of fifteen thousand dollars a month. Uh, typically, they've been in operation for over a month and a half. We've only had to fuse them one time uh with it, uh with an initial amount of fifteen thousand dollars that have not came they have not came for any additional monies or revenue. So a lot of that money is through revenues they're bringing in, as well as expenditures. Of course, that money can fluctuate based on your contract. The village has a minimum requirement, and it's minimum. So that amount is based on the revenue they're bringing in. Um, the golf course portion has the same, uh, similar general fund requirements, a little bit higher, that we keep them up and running, as far as, uh, their general fund for their general expenses. But they also make revenue as well. So, uh, the village only is responsible for, like I said, keeping up their general fund at a certain amount. Uh, their general budget is mostly based on revenue that they're projected to bring in. Of course, that change is in fluctuation. So this is, they remember, that, uh, the clubhouse has just been op, in operational for about a month and a half. They've been open maybe about two to three weeks, they, they've been doing events. So they're actually ramping up now. So what you see on the budget is a projection, and as they said, it, it, it can change. Um, both the golf course and the club provide a first draft of their budget. Of course, it's gonna be modified as it stated, uh, by the time this budget comes back before the board for final approval.
Okay. I'd just like to see that we look into that a little bit further when it does come up. Just to, just a question, you know, do they still need that hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, and, and thank you for that, because I'm really happy to see them, because their, um, businesses they do in Mission Park, Schaumburg, and Olympic Fields is unbelievable. And I'm honored to have it, rather than some people that we hire, and it's all the expense beyond us a hundred percent. We couldn't have put these additions in there, we couldn't afford it. So they did this all at, at their cost.
Right.
So I'm looking for, just like Casper's doing. We are not any longer a million dollars in a hole. We're coming up out of that with this. So that's why I'm happy with what they're going to do, and the procedures and the thing plans that they have, because I know what they can produce. So I'm glad that you're gonna use it Saturday, and start giving that revenues.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you. And is that paying down the bond?
Right.
Them doing that, is that paying down the bond that we have out there? That's, that's reducing the deficit.
That's still a separate, the village took the bond. That's our responsibility. Very much.
Look, ah.
Yeah.
No, can I ask you a favor? That's our problem.
Okay, sorry, um, next person, Cynthia, Cynthia Hudson.
Good evening, mayor, uh, board trustees, uh, viewing public, uh, publicly. Uh, my name is Cynthia Hudson. I just wanted to come and congratulate those that ran in the elections, those that won. Um, anybody who ran into that election, whether you won or lost, it takes guts to get up there and run for a position. It takes guts to go, go up there and stand for what you believe in. So congratulations to everybody that was involved in the election. Um, I just wanted to let you all know that we did pass the referendum. Yay! We passed it by a landslide.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you. Uh, thank everybody that voted yes for the referendum. The, the overwhelming response was two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five yes to seven hundred and twelve no's. So we beat the blank out of them. So, uh, thanks to Billy Morgan, who actually came up with the question and presented it. It's been great working with Billy. I work on a team. Uh, there's a team of us that we're constantly fighting the school board, and it doesn't stop just with this referendum. We're gonna stay out on top of things. We're gonna always be at those meetings. We're gonna make sure that they do not close Coretta Scott Keane, Talila, or any of our schools. We're gonna make sure our children are protected. We're gonna make sure our villages are protected. You know, because I, I told them, you know, you will not tear down the two African-American communities while you build up the two white communities, because that's pretty much what they were doing. I told them I was a plaintiff in the first lawsuit, and I will definitely be a plaintiff in the second, when, if it leads to it, because the way they were doing, we were leading down that same road, and we're not gonna have it. So we're gonna keep our eyes on the school board, and I, I encourage and urge everybody, whether you have a child in the school or not, please attend some of these school board meetings. And let them know, we care about our children, and we care about our village, and we're willing to fight for our children, and we're willing to fight for our village. And we're not gonna just let them come in and tear us down, our children or our community. And I just want to say thank you for everybody that voted, and job well done, we did.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank you publicly for all the work and all the reports. I don't know if you heard about it, but when you weren't here, we were talking about where do we get the information from the school board, and what's happening. You were mentioned. And we thank you for your diligence and your faithfulness of coming out, always coming, giving us reports. We appreciate you, and that's why I support going, and I tell you, and I back her. Please, because I've been doing it for years, and my kids have been out of school for years. Please go to the school board meetings. We need an impact. We have maybe two, three people, and we go there. And that's ridiculous. And we have the majority of the children there. We should come out and support that. Thank you.
And, and you know, we're mentioned on their side all the time in a negative way.
We really are.
And the, the comment that's going on, you know, from some people in Crete, some people in Moni, is that we don't fight for our children, and we don't fight for our community. And they bank on that.
Sure do.
They don't want us at those meetings, but that's why we make sure somebody is going to always be there. We're, we're, we're trying, like you said, there's only a few of us, but it needs to be more. I no longer have children, I, but like I told the school board, I had to correct myself, because I said, I no longer have children in the district, but I said, let me correct that. As long as there are cha, there's a ch, children that look like me, they're all my babies, and I'm gonna fight like I gave birth to each and every one of them. So I urge you all, the public, we need to get out there. You don't have to make every board meeting. They meet every third Tuesday of the month. The committee of the whole is every second Tuesday of the month. That was today. And it's kind of hard, because I know that our village has the meetings, so we can't be at two places at one time, but every now and then, at least make that third Tuesday of the month. Come out there and fight, whether you got kids or not. Your taxes are going towards the schools.
And, uh, Mr. Simmons?
I'm sorry.
I, I, I think it's my time, okay, I'll just say, uh, about the, Mrs. Simmons, comment. Uh, with the playground, we did Kaboom before I was there. If you start a list, please add me to that list. I'm more than happy to come out there and, and put my hands in the dirt, and get down there, down in dirty, because we need safety for our children. We need safety for the kids. We need a place for them to go and play and be safe. So, whatever you all come, the village manager, Ms. Simmons, Ms. Simmons, count me in.
Thank you.
Here, Ms. Simmons. Um, I'd like to, um, comment with, uh, Gina Williams had said, um, I see we didn't get to ask that question. What about the potholes? We got potholes on Pin Oak, we got potholes on White Oak. We got potholes all up and down the street, Burnham, Black Oak, Exchange. What are you gonna do? I mean, it's, it's terrible. So, can we get an answer about that question?
You know, um, when I was in Chicago with V L N Saturday, I said, my God, I wish I could take some pictures of the potholes in Chicago. I mean, I, I'm understanding what you're saying, but understand, we had a governor in there for four years. We got no M F T funds. We had a bad snow. Now that we can get some money, hopefully J P will help us. We put in a, I, I submitted with the board, with the, um, sorry, with our, uh, employees, a forty-two million dollar capital bill that hopefully gives some funding to Mission Park. So that's when it happens. We can't, oh, I got, sorry, we can't, at, everybody, every village has had the same problems, Rich, Rich Park. Every village, we all suffered. We had a meeting, all the mayors had a meeting Saturday. And we talked about that issue. What are we going to give our M F T funds? Actually, they reduced it. So it's going to be a struggle. We can patch it as much as we can, but nobody has a magic wand to go through here, because I did do a survey with our region, our, um, um, what's his name, um, Robertson Engineers. They did a public survey, and they had the machines and everything, three million dollars. Right now, at the meeting we just had, they said fifty billion dollars is going to take to repair sh, to stay at Illinois, just for our roads and highways. It's horrible, and it's just not University Park, but we're working on it unless we can. So we'll wait to see what forty-two, how much of the forty-two million dollars did they give University Park? And we can get the roads fixed. But it's bad. It's a very, very dangerous, you know, it's getting dangerous. Yep.
These holes are so deep there, when you fall in and your car just break down.
I know, go up to Mission Park, right up the street, same way. We're not unique with this. So, so if somebody tells you to come here and fix it instantly, that's a lie, because I know where the money is and where it's not. GP, I'm sorry.
Mayor, can, I, I'd like to defend, uh, uh, Director Darrell, because, uh, uh, he's not here, but I will say on, I have been following, manager paid to tell you that I, I have followed, because it's my pet peeve too. Um, Olmstead Road, he just done. He did not get to do that until last Wednesday. They're trying to work the inside of the infrastructure. They're trying to hit the worst streets first. I'm just gonna be honest, uh, most of them potholes that he's filling and the equipment they're do, they're using, instead of going down in the bump, now you're going over a bump, in which I would say I prefer that than what, you know, we were inquiring, you know, that was happening, but he is moving trustee. And since you mentioned that, I'm, I'm sure if he was here tonight, he will make his way over to Pin Oak.
So, the village has been, I think, over the last year, has prioritized filling potholes in roads. We will prioritize roads. If there are new potholes that exist, we will fill them systematically. There's only eight hours in the day. So I understand the concerns of our residents, and we will focus on roads. If there's any specific potholes that have damaged your vehicle or anything like that, that can be reported to the child, claim forms can be done. But we are working diligently to fill those potholes. Uh, they, they, to repair all the roads in University Park. The last time we went through our road plan is over three million dollars to resurface the roadways. For, uh, Adam Hurston Abbott alone is over five hundred thousand dollars. I've mentioned that before. And there has to be capital funding to do that. Unfortunately, there are not a lot of grants for residential roads. A lot of the road grants out there, from I D O T and the United States Department of Transportation are dealing with, uh, state, county, roads and highways. So we are aware. As long as we're made aware of the potholes, we will do a schedule and we'll make sure we get those roads done appropriately. I appreciate, um, trustee Williams, as well as Ms. Gina, uh, Williams coming up speaking about White Oak and Pin Oak. I will speak to Director, uh, Byder tomorrow in regards to that accident, and he will have a scheduled time to do that. And I will touch base with both of you all via cell phone, uh, to give you a timeframe. Are we responsible for that? Yes. Okay, no, I'm just asking a question, because some other co-sax said the same thing. And they said that we keep telling, they keep telling us that, oh, well, we're not responsible for that. I'm just making sure we're across the board and we're legal with every, I mean, that's when we're responsible. I know some things that, in her area, um, trustee Wilson is cer, no, Wilson. They have certain things that the village covers, and some things we don't cover. So I'm just trying to ask the question for the residents, so other people will know the same thing. Certain areas we have. But that's just a question to them. So White Oak and Pin Oak, we're responsible for all roadways. As long as it's in the roadway, if it's in the roadway, we're responsible for the right of way.
Okay, mayor, um, when it comes to Pin Oak and when it comes to White Oak, we are responsible, the association is responsible for our parking spaces. The village is responsible, coming down, just like he just explained to you, coming down those roads.
I just said that for the audience, I understand.
I just, I understand. I want the audience to understand. I understand.
Okay. Um, um, you have to pass the mic. Ms. Mark Neilson Morgan, you have to pass the mic to her, please. Okay. All right, then. The next item on the agenda. Five A one, discussion ordinance authorized an execution of, execution of a lease in a property, commercial property buying between the Woods University Park, Little Cook, Cook Towns, Illinois. Reason, I guess that's Horizon Foods LLC for Town Center, Unit Thirty, Town Center Drive. They're most, I'm, I'm sorry, they're up for a discussion. This is Doug Cow.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is a standardized lease for the lease of the old Johnny's property for Horizon Foods to open up a restaurant. Uh, a, uh, business proposal has been submitted, uh, and been approved by myself, uh, to, for this lease to be completed. The potential business owner is here. If the board has any specific questions, it is a standard restaurant. There's no special permitting requirements that are needed. Um, uh, if there are questions, I ask, then individually, please step up. And, uh, the board can, uh, the board can address any questions that they may have. You can step up, sir.
And I do hear that he has a signature hamburger. Who want to hear about that?
Yeah, we have a couple of signature dishes.
Okay. Can you get the mic closer, so that it can get you good up? Right, okay.
This next, state your name. Uh, I'm Cory Carter, and I will be opening, uh, the Always Girl, which, uh, we have a, a two-fold menu, fast food, but not processed, uh, food, and also a homestyle, uh, menu as well.
Okay. We're excited about it, because I'm, I'm glad the fact it didn't stay, stood, sitting there dormant for a long time. And our college students were really used to going over to Johnny's. But I'm glad that someone's coming in. I appreciate you coming to speak to me about it. And we're excited about it.
Well, by the way, I'm a, um, I'm a long, I'm a long-time citizen of University Park.
Do we have any vegetarian, uh?
Uh, yeah, ve, uh, vegetarian dishes. Uh, we have a salmon burger. Um, we have a lot of different things coming. Uh, pasta dishes, rice dishes, lamb. Uh, the only thing, the only product that we won't sell is pork.
I'm looking forward to it.
You're that, no pork. I'll swallow it later.
Well, we got barbecue. I, I heard some, some people asking for barbecue, so we do have a smoker that we're bringing in, so we'll be offering our barbecue as well.
That's chicken, or?
Yeah, chicken, lamb, fish.
Oh, okay.
Har, hardly any, any, um, fried food. A lot, a lot of grilled things, uh, baked dishes.
Yeah, we look forward to that. Any other questions?
No, Madam Mayor, uh, I just want to say I, I did look through it unless, uh, our backup detail eyes, trustee, they haven't seen anything. But to me, it looked like our standard, like manager paid, I, I just recommend, or I'm for it, in agreeing to being in, uh, the me, next, uh, board meeting for a vote.
Well, if there, there was one thing, I was looking forward to the pork chops.
I could do you one better, though. I could do you one better. I, I could do you some turkey chops.
Did say you could do a turkey chop.
I, I do a mean turkey chop.
Gluten free. Make sure that's gluten free for him, too. Okay?
No problem.
All right. Any others, concerns, discussions? Is it enough that we all go in agreement to go on this one agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, that's, that's it. Yes. Right. Right, we want to go on this. Okay, at this point, that's all we have to offer, buddy. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you. And we motion to go, a motion to go adjourn, adjourned regular meeting and go into a secondary session. Moved by trustee Wilson, second by trustee McCullough. Go, call. Trustee Wilson. Trustee Wilson. Hi, trustee Wilson.
Vote side. Vote side. Hi.
Vote side. Thank you, everyone. Love you. Can't do anything about it. Let's go.